It's ten o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court meeting. County of Starr, Monday, March 23rd. Let the record show we do have quorum. Everyone being present. Everyone, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comments? Okay, first item is the approval of the vendors list.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
You've got the vendor list in front of you. There are two new vendors. They've been recommended.
They're to approve.
Second.
Motion. Motion second. Oliver Fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Next is claims.
Yes, sir. Again, you've got a list of the claims that have also been recommended.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved in second. Discussion. Oliver Fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item six is an action item that I put on there, and this is to approve the declaration of local disaster for the emergency, for the public health emergency in Starr County that COVID-19. I went ahead and signed an emergency order, but that's good only for seven days. And within those seven days, it has to be approved by the court.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Second.
Moved in second to approve.
The declaration is for April.
Through April what?
April 20th. This is the new one.
Okay, so what we're asking is to declare from today.
A continuance until April 20th.
On April 20th. Is that okay with the emergency?
Yes, sir. That's fine.
Is that the, I thought it was only declared for seven days?
No.
And they're reading the emergency.
Oh, okay.
And this is the continuation up to April 20th?
That is correct.
The court can do it now.
Okay, okay. I'll second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion in second. Discussion.
So that means that they can't join or anything, have anything, only 10 people until April 20th?
Right. Well, yes, unless we see a break, then we come back.
Then we'll come back and rescind the motion.
But I don't think that's gonna happen.
All right.
Okay. Any other discussion?
No, sir.
Oliver Fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Also, before we leave that subject, this is, there's three tiers. This is tier two, when we have cases that are within 150 miles from us. Once they get to Starr County, then we go into tier three, and that becomes more stringent. You know, it could get to the point that, like Brownsville Cameron is doing right now, they have a curfew. No one can go out, you know, stay at home. If they catch anyone outside that doesn't have necessary business, they can be fined $1,000 or even go to jail. But that's tier three. We're not there yet. We're just at tier two.
Your Honor, I heard Richard said that nobody was allowed to be out on the street after 12 o'clock.
Yes. Yeah, from, well, 10.
10:00.
Yeah. 10:00. Unless, you know, there's exceptions. Unless you're going to the hospital, unless you're going to a gas station, but only the gas station and back, you're going to go get groceries, there's only certain things that qualify. But are you gonna be, just because you're.
Would it be a real idea to close the park? I had a park that went to 10 o'clock.
I would say yes. Right now, see, the problem with this thing is that there's no vaccine, there's no medicine, there's nothing. The only thing we can do is keep it from spreading. And the more people that get together, the more chance there is, for example, us here. Let's say I have it. I don't know it. I have no symptoms. And I shake hands with everyone, well, now all of you have it. Now you all go to your families, all your families will get it. So that's what we're trying to avoid, you know, keeping everyone at home so that it doesn't spread. That's the only thing we can do.
Let me ask you something. Let's say that we go into tier three, like you're saying. What is gonna happen actually to us as elected officials and the employees that we're still gonna go deliver meals to the elderly, continue picking up the trash and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, that's gonna be a difficult question, Commissioner, because, see, now it's a balancing act. What's more important? Do they need the food? Do they, the trash, certainly, we don't need to pick it up, not for every day. Or, you know, or what's the highest risk? The people that are taking the food, if they're contaminated or they have the disease and they spread it to those elderly, chances are they're gonna die. So the best thing is, como HEB and some of these places, they will deliver the food, they leave it on the steps, and then they leave. Maybe something like that is what we're gonna have to do.
I started this morning to deliver plates. We still have contact with the people. We have gloves and masks.
Right.
Better from, okay, you're in contact with them.
Yeah, see, but.
I'm trying to tell you just, so after we go into tier three, these people that are at home, we won't be able to deliver food?
No, we will, we will. You know, there are exceptions to every.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to say.
There are exceptions, and, you know, certainly, we're not gonna starve to death. Now, food, yeah, move away. And food, the virus doesn't, doesn't spread with the food.
But contact with the person.
Yeah. And that's the reason of washing your hands.
Been trying to get some gloves, I finally find some. Didn't want this.
We have some. We have some.
Reyna, what's that, Reyna?
She's over there. The gloves, Reyna?
Yes, sir.
Didn't want this.
Commissioner's saying he needs some.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, we have several thousand of them.
Mascaras?
No.
No masks, no, no.
Oh, we have the gloves. Really, la máscara is for those that are sick. So that they don't spread it when they cough and they sneeze. But if you're, if you're healthy and the mask doesn't do you any good, you don't breathe the virus. It's through contact.
And the pantry has to continue, you know, like we don't drive through because the people think we're HEB or we have to buy, we can still provide.
The drive-through is a good practice. Or, yeah.
I deliver to the.
Yeah. Yeah. Anyhow, that's on this. Of course, I'm sure you all, every day, there's new things coming up, pero we're doing the best we can.
I was gonna say, también, that account. Friday had people coming in from different precincts to get the emergency bag. Do we give them?
Aquí no han caído, pero we're not taking in new people.
And the people get upset.
Y especialmente si esos que están yendo a los centros allá, they're responsible. They have been making money with, they're responsible to take care of them too.
Yeah, I would say that you give only to your people in your precinct, yeah, because then they need to go, if not, we could lose control. I could go to, Mr. Garcia, no way. Yeah, of course, the food pantries are open, you know, there's a lot of help for people, especially the elderly.
Como esos que están on the centers, every center take them to their own precinct?
Pues es gente que, like I had, Friday had an incident, vino un tenor conocido, el precincto Jaime, que no tenía comida, which is not true.
Que no tenía comida? Pero todos que están en el Jaime. Mandaselo Jaime, que diga.
Y se enojó porque no requiso dar.
Natural.
A mí me caeran el viernes uno de cada precincto también. ¿Qué es el problema?
Haces mentiras.
No, que chicos que no.
Correlos, lo que tiene que hacer.
No los corres, tienes comida. Yo tengo comida. Ahora están peleando la pinche comida.
No, no están.
¿Qué tienen ustedes, hombre?
Ahí está haciendo.
No me toca, hombre. Si no están peleando la pinche comida ahora, ¿qué tienen ustedes? Está joteando ahí.
Váyate lo que haces.
Okay, let's go on. So I did call for the vote, right?
Yes.
Okay. Item seven is an action item, and this is to approve the adoption of the county multi-jurisdiction hazardous mitigation plan. You all have that in your.
Your Honor, somebody here to speak with us.
Judge, that is correct. Judge, we did work on a multi-jurisdiction, multi-jurisdiction kind of hazard plan with South Texas Development Council. We have Lupita Trinidad to give you more information on that.
Just identify yourself for the record.
Good morning. My name is Lupita Trinidad. I'm with the South Texas Development Council. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
We're here to present the final, the final plan for adoption. Back in 2016, we came to you to start the development of the plan to apply for a grant. After a couple of years, we've finalized the development of the plan, and it's gone through state and FEMA review, and FEMA has approved it to this point. At this point, the status of the plan is approved, approved, pending adoption, which means the jurisdictions have to approve it so we can have the final approval set, date set. The plan went through the five jurisdictions involved. As a leading, as a leading jurisdiction, we came to you first to, then everybody come together. There was input from subject matter experts. There was community input given at three different locations, three different dates, so the community can have some input. And we also, once the plan was in the final draft stages, we also put it for public commentary. Other than that, I do, the plan, it still says draft because it's not finally approved. That will come after all the jurisdictions have formally adopted the resolution. This will now give you an opportunity to apply for mitigation, federal mitigation funds as they become available.
Yeah, and that's the importance of this thing, you know, without it, we cannot ask for any FEMA funds or any type of fund, so.
Correct.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Taken, moved. Moved in second to approve.
So there's funds out there, we can, we can ask for funds and they'll help us out?
Yes.
For the clinic, y todo eso.
This has to be done every five years?
So there's, this is for natural disasters. So, yes.
What we're going through?
No, no, not for this. That's some, that's a different agency. I'm pretty sure you won't need a plan for that.
I got confused.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, this is for natural disasters. So anytime there's a disaster declaration and you're part of it, you can submit money for mitigation funds. Annually, there's legislative, legislative funds allocated for this, and you can also apply for it now that you have a plan. That is the first requirement in applying for mitigation funds under the pre-disaster mitigation or the hazard mitigation grant program.
Well, we thank you for the work that you all did for us.
Thank you, Judge.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Oliver Fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight is an action item, is to, an action to dissolve the electioneering regulation policy, the exception of the courthouse.
Yes, sir. I do some more, Your Honor. Taken, Your Honor.
Moved in second, discussion. Oliver.
Sure.
Commissioners, Judge, while I understand the impetus to do this, I have a grave concern, to be quite honest with the court, regarding the effect that it will have on the electioneering as a whole. Up to now, in federal court, and the thing is that I'd really recommend to the Commissioners' Court to stay, vote on this until it has discussed it with, and we can allow our attorneys that represent the county to come in, because this still is under litigation. One of the things that the judge has consistently held is that because it is neutral and it doesn't affect, it's across the entire county, it is neutral, it has withstood scrutiny. In other words, we're not disenfranchising some people and allowing some people to remain enfranchised. The problem is, is that we start treating areas differently. We may have trouble, and we may end up opening ourselves up to liability. It may cost the county money. I don't know. I quite honestly cannot tell the court with any certainty whatsoever that it will not cost us money if you all take action today. We may open ourselves up to liability. If you want to do away with the entire policy, that's one thing. Certainly, I could tell you that that would not open up the county to liability. When you take it in piecemeal and you treat people from La Rosita, people from Roma, people from La Casita, La Grulla, differently than those that are in Real Grande City, that's where we fall into problems. And doing away with the electioneering, honestly, does very little with what I think the goals that the court is trying to do, because if you'll remember, we do have two policies in place. One is county use, and the other is electioneering. They're two different things entirely. And so I think this is a haphazard, it's a knee-jerk reaction, it's just trying to do something to do it for doing its sake. It does open up the Commissioners' Court to liability, I believe, and at the very minimum, I would not be doing my job if I did not recommend to the court to at least sit down during a workshop with our attorneys that represent us and to see how it affects the litigation. That being said, is it, it is entirely the court's prerogative. I don't have a vote, you all have the votes, but I would not be doing my job if I did not recommend to the Commissioners to at least wait to discuss it with our attorneys.
Your Honor, I don't think he is right, in my opinion, because we're already dropping the lawsuit that they had and we had. That's finishing up what the lawsuit contains. We're gonna do away with it, and we don't have a lawsuit pending. So I don't see any problem with that.
Commissioner, you dropped the lawsuit? Is that what I heard?
Yeah, when we do away with the electioneering, the lawsuit should go away, because there are no fight, we're not fighting anymore. We go back.
Well, it's, it's nice to think that way, Commissioner. Unfortunately, that's not the law, because the fact that we do something and then we take it back, it's, they have not dropped the lawsuit. The lawsuit still exists. Granted, the situation that created the lawsuit no longer exists. However, they can still come back and say, during that time that it existed, you hurt us, and so we want money for the time that we were hurt.
Well, the one we hurt was us, not the guys, I mean, because this thing, this regulation that you all did was to.
With all due respect, Commissioner. With all due respect, Commissioner.
Deprive our people to vote, so we want to give the right to people to vote again.
With all due respect, Commissioner, I don't believe it is, well, we and you, it isn't us. You are part of the Commissioners' Court that did in fact order it.
Right.
So you did this. We did this. You and I are together, the Commissioners' Court is together.
I never was in favor of that.
I understand that, Commissioner. But the thing is that, just like Donald Trump is our president, he is not my president, he's not your president, he's our president. We as a unity, a unit, did it.
I would say that with this, Your Honor, we'll wait for the outcome.
And that's entirely up to the court.
The reason for this, Victor, is that this last election, La Rosita was totally different. I mean, it wasn't applied to, I mean, it was.
Todo lo que están ahí, they was that we implemented this were the biggest violators in that election out there.
So my thing was, you know, if the court wants to do away with it, I don't have any problem, as long as it's not at the courthouse, because here, we have a lot of business every day, and we cannot afford to have him in a parking lot and to, where people cannot come and do their daily business.
I agree completely, Judge. Like I said, in principle, I agree with the court. I'm not disagreeing with it. I think at the very least, it would be prudent, and again, I'm speaking just as a lawyer. I don't really, frankly, like I told the court, I don't have a position on this, it really one way or the other, and I understand the practicality and the matters. It would just behoove us to talk to our attorneys. That's it.
Commissioner, it's a big building now, just, it might be wise to save the election over there. You're okay. And we'll wait for the result. We got a motion and a second.
It's entirely up to the court. I just, like I said, I'm just doing my job, nothing more.
Okay. Well, I do have a motion in a second, so I'll go ahead and call for the question. Oliver Fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Okay, the next one is the same thing, is to dissolve billing and property use policy with the exception of the courthouse.
I do some more, Your Honor.
Moved in second, discussion. Oliver Fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 10, oh, this is an action item to rescind the action on item 15 of Commissioners' Court held on March the 9th, and this is where we decided to increase the record fees from 225.
From 225 to 300.
To 325.
To 325, Your Honor. And I talked to a gentleman that has to be placed on the, they didn't show up. He said, he told me that it was too much, and that's it, that, we go back to how we were. No, he wanted to lower it down, but to have the ability to use the winch and use the cleanup. I said, no. So what we're gonna do, say, we'll rescind it and go back to 225?
Yeah.
I do some more.
225, 325, 425.
Are you doing, you rescinding it because of that one person? No, because everybody says it's too high. Everybody, you said, did you talk to all the records? No, I didn't talk, they come in when we passed it, nobody came in. You're doing it because of one person? I don't think so, Judge. I don't think so, not for one person. Well, that's how it came about. Now you want to rescind an order? No, there's a winner, todo lo que subimos. No, against that persona. We're gonna have to bajar para tomar decision. You want to punish that one person? Not the same one person, but the one that came. But the same thing, you want to punish everybody? How do I make your service? I'll work against it. Well, I do some more to go back to 225.
Second motion. I have a motion in second to lower to 225. Discussion. Oliver Fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
I don't know you.
Commissioner, I'm ready to vote against.
Tú trajiste primero eso, tú trajiste esto, la idea. Yo lo traje y fue con una persona nomás, y ese mismo dijo que no, pues la traemos para atrás. Está testialo ya, yo. No, querida, testiaste tú.
Calle, alogenle, hay que decir que extraen el corona o qué. Almen.
Okay, item 11 is an action item, and this is to renew the 2021 Indigent Defense Discretionary Grant for the Public Defenders Program. Mr. Pittis.
Yes, Judge, that is to renew the grant for 2021. At this time, we don't know what the amounts are, it's not applicable.
Why, why are we approving it now, when we just?
It's for the application for the 2021.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Okay, okay. I have a motion in a second to approve.
Your Honor, I would ask that the motion be to approve the application.
Right, right.
Specifically the application, not the grant itself.
Motion to approve the application, Your Honor.
For my grant, so how can we?
And that was gonna be my question, we can apply, but we don't have to accept it.
Of course not.
Later on.
You can always reject it.
Yeah, 'cause see, we don't know the numbers. This year, you know, I was very much against renewing it, but the state lowered it to where we would pay.
Half.
Less than half.
Less than half.
So it's still made it profitable. If next year they go up or it's not profitable, then.
We can always deny it.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Item number 12 is the resolution for the application.
Okay, to apply for the. Okay, so let's take 11. I do have a motion in a second. Oliver Fair, please aye. Oppose.
If the motion is for the application.
For the application, yes.
And then item 12 is a.
The resolution.
For the resolution for the application.
Motion to approve the resolution for the application.
Okay, motion in second, discussion. Oliver Fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 13 is an action item, and this is to approve a waiver of penalty and interest on account 11607. Ms. Alinas.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm typing out a bit breakdown of each and every fund used to pay the, the, the funding attached to the adjustment. Just, yeah, we tend by the, the.
This is the one that we talked about?
Yes. You want to do the discussion?
Well, I just want to explain, see, I got to, Ms. Alinas, I hate to return money anytime.
I agree to it.
You know, and so I did call our delinquent attorneys, and they said that if there was an error in addressing or anything like that, all we need to do is the last five years.
Right.
We don't have to do it all, so.
That's the breakdown for five years only.
Okay.
That's how much each, each fund needs to.
It's supposed to involve, right, Ms. Alinas?
Yes. I highlighted, and I also highlighted, in the, in the adjustment, I highlighted the changes that were made and why.
So it's only 800 dollars?
It's attached to it.
You're requesting?
Excuse me? No, it's 800 and some?
801 would be.
801.
For, for, from 2011 to 2019.
What is that, for Oliver?
Yeah.
Ah, for 2011 to 2019, okay.
But all we have to do is five years.
300.
300.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Second to approve, what, the five years?
No, only the five years only, 297, 86.
Right.
I have a motion in a second to approve the five years. Any further discussion?
That's what's required by the law, right? As long as we stay within five years.
Discussion. Oliver Fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 14 is an action item, is to accept payment from the Republican Party for the 2018 primary in the amount of $75, and that it be deposited to the election expense line.
I was noticing on this one here, this is to, to return money?
Yes.
If I see this thing here.
What happened?
This is not the guy from the, this is the, the, the tienda, ¿cómo se llama? Canales.
Yes.
The, Álvaro?
Yeah, but we should read the names.
According to him, just, they have not paid this money. No, 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 es que no es el terreno, es un terreno que está allá en la mina. That's what I'm talking, la manuela de la tienda. No, 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 de esa persona los dueños. He went to me, and what he did, and it was a mistake from the appraisal district, okay? The owner transferred two pieces of property to, to one of their sons or whatever, and uh, to, to, to one of their sons or whatever. And he said, I saw they did, say, a lot, ten and, okay. And they only picked up one. The appraisal district picked up one, and they're charging for one only. And he, this guy has been delinquent. He said, and he went to me and said, look, I see what your problem is. This is the appraisal district's problem. I don't think you're, you're supposed to, you're, your responsibility is for the principal only, not interest, penalty and interest. But he had not paid, and he said he would not...
Yeah, and, and that was probably my, my mistake, Commissioner, is to waive it, it, it doesn't say to return.
Okay, and that, because here, they haven't, no, they haven't paid it.
Yeah, yeah, just to waive it so that we bill them only the, the last, uh...
And he only get, get billed the last five years, not all the way to two thousand and eleven because of this earth.
The last five years, he, it will be waived.
Yeah, it's penalty and interest only, not... Penalty and interest.
Penalty and interest. Not alone.
But he told me, Commissioner, I sent it to you because he, I, I, I think it's an appraisal district problem, but I'm not on the board of state laws, so...
I, I, I saw what he, he, he had a, a legitimate...
Yeah.
Request.
Yeah, I remember that one. So two lots.
Yeah.
And he was only paying for one lot.
Responsible for the, for the tax.
And he needs to pay the other lot because the, the charges were going somewhere else. It was not coming to him.
Yeah, from twenty fifteen...
No, they never said it to nobody.
The things were going to different areas.
Okay. From twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen is where we're gonna waive penalty and interest.
But he's still gotta pay his taxes.
Yeah, of course.
Plus, after two thousand and eleven.
Yeah. The years before, he needs to pay penalty and interest.
Is it considered the last five years?
I'm sorry?
Five years.
The last five years. Any other question on that?
No.
Okay, item fourteen is to accept payment from the Republican Party in seventy-five dollars and deposit to election expense line.
I do some move.
Second, your honor.
Moved in second, discussion. Olive Fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item fifteen is also to accept payment from the Democratic Party
I'm gonna notify you to go to the end.
In the amount of four thousand, two eighty-three, twenty-one, and deposit to the...
I do some move, your honor.
Second.
Moved in second, discussion. Olive Fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item sixteen is to approve a donation of three sixty, three hundred and sixty-two dollars to the precinct three food bank.
I'm gonna carry the mosque. I do some move.
Second.
Moved in seven, and second, uh, Olive Fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Let, let me go back, uh, just for, say, be on the safe side. Item thirteen, on, on that vote, Commissioner Penia abstained.
Abstained.
He might have a complaint.
Uh, so, okay, he was only in the motion, just so...
Okay, let, let's go back to that one then. Uh, item thirteen, I'll go ahead and introduce a, a motion, or...
I do some move, your honor.
Second.
Moved in second. Olive Fair, please aye.
Aye.
Abstained.
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 Okay. Motion passes. Commissioner Penia abstains. Okay. Item seventeen is also an action item and is to approve a donation of seven hundred and fifty dollars uh, to the Starr County Food Pantry.
Approve.
Tell them, your honor.
Moved in second, discussion. Olive Fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Items, uh, eighteen through...
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven are budget amendments.
President, you know. It's a Republican, they're, they're all, correct, excuse me, uh, nineteen says donation, yes. Uh, that one, uh, should say request, rather than donations.
Which, which one?
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Discuss and take action to approve donation.
Oh, yeah.
Request.
Request. Motion to approve.
Okay. Moved in second to approve items, uh, I believe was...
The twenty...
Eighteen through twenty-seven.
Four, four, seven.
Okay, and item twenty-eight and twenty-nine are budget corrections. Is there a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve. Tell them, your honor.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Olive Fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. And it is ten forty, in pursuant to section five five one point oh seven four, we will now go into executive session to discuss order of salaries, to discuss possible actions, the ASO COVID-nineteen actions, and, uh, purpose of discussion of Tri-County employees. It's eleven o'clock, and we're back in, in open session. The item that we're discussing was order of salaries. Uh, is there a motion?
Motion to approve of salaries.
Moved in second to approve order of salaries as presented. Discussion. Olive Fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
That's one brother.
Uh, the item thirty-one was just informational, and thirty-two were informational, information on the COVID-nineteen